I bid all of you welcome to your city hall with new and returning councillors and a mayor for them all. Five for the city and five for the region. To me, it looks like a pretty strong legion. Ward five has councillors Nicholson and Gray. Rest assured with them, they will not betray. Ward four Derrick Guyberson and Mr. Rick Kerr will help the city move forward, that is for sure. Bradley Marks and Bob Chapman represent you in ward three, and Bob has the regiment on speed dial you see. The hyphenated Mr. Dante Maren-Pietri is like an ever-ready, long-lasting battery, keeps going and going. And since he's not from TO, for simplicity's sake, let's call him Tito. City ward two is your rep Miss Jane Hurst. She now sits on council and for her it's a first. Rosemary McConkey and again Mr. John Neal give ward one a good voice. With them, it's a good deal. Which brings us to someone who needs no introduction. Your worship Dan Carter will lead the whole production. Capable, decisive, will lend you an ear. He'll wear the mayor's chain for the next four years. Kudos to all of you as you take your place of esteem. I leave you with God bless Single Malt and God save the Queen.
Thank you, Mr. McKee, members of council, special guests, and ladies and gentlemen. I call this December the third, two thousand and eighteen inaugural meeting of city council to order. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Andrew Brower and I am the city clerk for the city, and I'll be chairing the first portion of the meeting. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to everyone in attendance and those viewing by web stream. In particular, family and friends of the members of council who are present for what I'm sure is a very proud moment in their lives. At this time, I'd like to introduce Christine D'Anino Voe. Christine has been an Oshawa resident since two thousand and five. She is a mezzo soprano and creator of the Oshawa Opera and Oshawa Piano and Vocal Academy. Christine, I'd like to invite you to sing the national anthem.
Oh, Canada, oh, my native land. True patriot love in all of us command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true most strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Thank you, Christine. Before we proceed with the meeting, as part of the city of Oshawa's efforts to support the recommendations of the Truth and Reconciliation Commission, I acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional territories of the Mississaugas of Skugog Island First Nation. Today, these treaty lands are still home to many indigenous people from across Turtle Island, and we are grateful to have the opportunity to work and live in the community on this territory. On behalf of the city of Oshawa, it is my pleasure to both congratulate and introduce the city council of the city of Oshawa for the two thousand and eighteen to two thousand and twenty-two term. The ward one, city councillor Rosemary McConkey. City and regional councillor for ward one, John Neal. City councillor for ward two, Jane Hurst. City and regional councillor for ward two, Tito Dante Maren-Pietri. City councillor for ward three, Bradley Marks. City and regional councillor for ward three, Bob Chapman. City councillor for ward four, Derrick Guyberson. City and regional councillor for ward four, Rick Kerr. City councillor, ward five, John Gray. And city and regional councillor for ward five, Brian Nicholson. And of course, Mayor Dan Carter. Thank you, members of council. At this time, with the assistance of Sam Yun, our internal city solicitor, I would ask the city councillors Guyberson, Gray, Hurst, Marks, and McConkey to step forward to take their declaration of office and oath of allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen. After you have signed your declarations of office and oath of allegiance, please return to your council seat.
Hi, John Gray. I am elected city councillor. The municipality of the city of Oshawa. Do solemnly promise to exercise this office. To the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received or will not receive any payment or reward. Or promise thereof, will the exercise of this office? A promise thereof, will the exercise of this office? An avise, corrupt, or improper manner? I will disclose any pecuniary interest direct or indirect. In accordance with Municipal Conflict and Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. To Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. And I make this solemn promise and declaration. Conscientiously believing it to be true. And knowing that it is of the same force and effect as we made under oath.
Thank you, Mr. Yun. I will now ask regional and city councillors Chapman, Kerr, Maren-Pietri, Neal, and Nicholson to step forward to take their declaration of office and oath of allegiance to Her Majesty the Queen and returning to your council seat.
Hi, Bob Chapman. Having elected the office of regional and city councillor. In the municipality of Oshawa. Do solemnly promise and declare that. I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office of regional and city councillor. To the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received or will not receive any payment or reward. Or a promise thereof, will the exercise of this office? In a biased, corrupt, or in any other improper manner? I will disclose any pecuniary interest direct or indirect. In accordance with Municipal Conflict and Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. To Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. And I make this solemn promise and declaration. Conscientiously believing it to be true. And knowing that it is of the same force and effect as we made under oath.
Finally, Mayor Carter, please step forward. Paula, would you like to join us in the front? Members of council, can I ask you to stand, please?
Hi, Dan Carter. I have been elected to the, appointed to the office of mayor. In the municipality of the city of Oshawa. Do solemnly promise and declare that. I will truly faithfully and impartially exercise the office of the mayor. To the best of my knowledge and ability. I have not received or will not receive any payment or reward. Or a promise therefore, will the exercise of this office? In a biased, corrupt, or any other improper manner? I will disclose any pecuniary interest direct or indirect. In accordance with Municipal Conflict and Interest Act. I will be faithful and bear true allegiance. To Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. And I make this solemn promise and declaration. Conscientiously believing it to be true. And knowing that it is of the same force and effect as we made under oath.
Thank you. Please be seated, members of council. Thank you, Mr. Yun. At this point, I have the privilege of presenting Oshawa's thirty-first mayor since the municipality gained city status in nineteen twenty-four with the chain of office. Before I do so, I would like to provide some background on its significance. For many centuries, civic authorities have worn an official seal incorporating the arms of authority. It was originally worn on a gold chain around the neck of a chief official, and through the years, it has evolved into the modern-day chain of office. The current chain of office design was presented to city council on March the eighth, nineteen sixty-seven, as a centennial project of the Chamber of Commerce commemorating the March eighth, nineteen twenty-four date when the city of Oshawa gained city status. The chain symbolizes, pardon me, the chain includes a pendant bearing the coat of arms of the city of Oshawa containing symbols of cooperation, Oshawa Harbor, land transportation, Oshawa Airport in Ontario, with the motto "Labor and Prosper." The chain of office is an outward symbol of authority and to the wearer, a reminder of the responsibilities of holding such office. Your worship, it is my pleasure to present to you the chain of office. Your worship, pursuant to the municipal act, I now deem this council to be organized and turn the meeting over to you.
Good morning. Before I make my final, my opening remarks, I'd like to welcome some special guests that are in the, in the gallery representing different levels of government. I'd like to first take the opportunity to welcome MP Jennifer French with us this morning. Good morning, Jennifer. I'd also like to welcome MP Aaron O'Toole with us this morning. Good morning, sir. I'd also like to welcome the CEO of the Greater Oshawa Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Nancy Shaw. The president of the Greater Oshawa Chamber of Commerce and the youngest president of the Greater Oshawa Chamber of Commerce, Kyle Douglas. And I know that we have best wishes from dignitaries from across the country, and we thank them for their support. You may have noticed also that my beautiful wife Paula Carter is with me today. My brother David Carter is with me. My daughters Jennifer and Amanda are with me today. And my very, very beautiful sixteen-month-old granddaughter, Ms. Carolina May, if you'd welcome them, please. So, good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to all of our guests, family, friends, supporter, and dignitaries. What a glorious day it is. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate and welcome to our new and returning members of council. I would like to also welcome everyone's families and say thank you for your support as they take on their new role. As you know, this is a family commitment. Thank you to the public for the chance to serve my community for the next four years. I have to say that this is one of the most interesting, exciting, challenging times to be elected into public office. In every profession today, partnerships, collaboration, and working as a team is where success leads. We succeed when we all work together, especially in this chamber. We are only one vote and collaboration is a key to our success. I'd like to remind everybody that we face a new time in government. The public was very clear by the way they cast their votes in the past election. They made it very clear that we were to be a different type of government, a modern type of government. One that demands all of us to understand that this chamber is a place of respectful debate and not a place of theater. It is a place of respect not only to one another, but to everyone that enters this chamber. The public has demanded that we become more open and transparent, and we must commit to the highest standards of accountability through every aspects of government. A modern government that includes the voices of the public more often and through every aspect of the process of our local government. A modern government that encourages the public to take part in our public meetings, such as our committee meetings, our planning meetings, and the city's annual budget. Whether in person or utilizing today's technologies, it is important that we understand that the public's concerns must be included and their voices must be heard as we move into the future. The public wants us to hear their voices, so we hear their concerns on major issues that are facing our community and this council, such as the new e-commerce, retail cannabis outlets, Airbnb, rideshare, online voting, our poverty, homelessness. We know the economy is changing and we must find ways to create employment, attract investment, and compete on the world stage. This moment demands each of us to remember that every citizen wants and deserves to live in a safe, healthy, vibrant, accessible, and affordable community that has the best services to meet their busy lives. A community of opportunities and supports where you can live, work, play, invest, start a business, and create new ideas and new programs. Where we provide the best services for our seniors, where we create new ways of helping those that face hardships. Why? Because that's what great cities do, and that's what this moment demands. I envision a city that has a vibrant downtown, a waterfront that welcomes thousands of visitors, an active waterway, a city that leads in research and development, a city that has a world-class, leading post-secondary education, a city that partners with industry, education, and business and becomes a leader in progressing with its new innovation hub. A city that brings north, south, east, and west together. A city that never forgets its history or its heritage, but creates a future that welcomes people from across the world. A city that encourages active lifestyles with trails and pathways and parks and community centers and an active transportation network. A city that is built on the best that we can be. We must always look forward in everything that we do. This election told us that the public wanted local government to operate differently. It's time to embrace our customer service approach and how we serve the public here at city hall or in our neighborhoods. How we train our amazing staff. We must modernize the way that we communicate, more public outreach, more public input. So we are all charged with the responsibility of having the discipline to stay the course when it comes to our city finances and to continue to be great stewards of all public services. We must have the discipline to be focused on building a city that serves all of our citizens, no matter where they live. We must understand that we face many battles in days ahead, but we must always remember that this, as a city, we can overcome any hurdles, hardships that we face. Yes, this moment is calling all of us to be at our best, to hear the voices of our citizens, to embrace a new, modern way of governing. This moment is calling on each one of us to be respectful in everything we do. This is one of the most challenging, exciting, innovative times to be in public service, so let's embrace it. Let's on keep on creating the history and the pride that we Let's go on, keep on creating the history and the pride that we all feel when we talk about our great city. Let us be leaders in everything we do. Let us make sure that your voice is always heard, because your voice matters. The City of Oshawa has always been a city of light. A city has always overcome its hardships, its hurdles, its disappointments, its challenges, and its changes. The city has never run away from any of the hard things that we have faced that hurt us. With the light, with light never darkens. As your mayor, I commit to you to always lead in a way that brings at the best in all of us, and be the light that brings hope, optimism, pride to this great city. God bless this city, this council, and this country. Thank you. Counselor Chapman, I understand that you have a motion to adopt the confirming bylaws. Is that correct?
I do, your worship, move by myself, seconded by Counselor Guyberson, that the confirming bylaw be passed.
Confirming bylaws on the floor, all those in favor. Opposed, dots carried. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Counselor Gray, Counselor Kerr, thank you. All those in favor. Opposed, dots carried. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.